Hello and good evening. Welcome to the Wakefield School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, April 29th. We have just exited executive session and are now back into our regular open session. We will begin this meeting, as we do every meeting, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll continue with the reading of our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing a rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next, we would have public comment. Is there anyone in studio for public comment? Seeing none. Ian W. Cat, do we have anyone on Zoom for public comment?
Nobody has said anything.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we get to our consent agenda, I would like to welcome Alex Nauman.
Nauman.
Nauman, thank you so much to our committee. Alex won election and are returning Mr. Markham and Mr. Fontenella, but you guys have sat here before. So Alex, welcome to the room. Appreciate having you with us.
Thanks, glad to be part of the Wakefield School Committee.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And condolences, by the way.
It's a whole different thing. And maybe we could hear from our youth advisors before we move on to our consent agenda.
Hello, my name is Shay Thompson, I'm a senior at Wakefield Memorial High School. First of all, I'd like to start off by saying congratulations to all the spring sports team who have made it into the top 10 division on their... Oh, sorry. Congrats to all the spring sports teams who have made it into the top 10 for the divisions and the power rankings. Baseball's ranked number six, softball's ranked number nine, and boys across is ranked number three, so congratulations to them. And other things happening in the school, tomorrow our seniors will participate in the Credit for Life Fair. This learning experience allows the opportunity to learn and how to create a budget, a plan for their financial futures, and successfully navigate their life's unexpected adventures. Applications are now available for the 2025-2026 Swiss Exchange Program. More information will be in Principal McLeod's weekly update. And scholarship applications for the 2025-2026 academic year are now being accepted. Deadline is May 1st, 2025. And that's it for me.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Shay? No? All right. Seeing none.
Thank you.
Feel free to stick around, or if you have other important things to do.
Go get them.
Do that as well. Okay. Moving on to item number seven is our consent agenda. I believe we have a motion.
We do. Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the April...
I'm so sorry, I'm blind.
April 8th, 2025 School Committee Meeting, and accept the minutes of the April 15th, 2025 School Committee Student Services Subcommittee Meeting.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Dr. Biscatlo, yes? Okay, thank you, that is unanimous.
Sorry, I'm going to have to stay for that one because I wasn't at the April 8th meeting.
That's okay. That's right, Pete. Could've mentioned that during discussion, but that's okay.
Yeah, sorry.
I won't hold you to it. Item number eight, budget items. I believe we have some guests.
We have two guests to accept tonight, both in kind values. Do you want to read the motion?
Sure. Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $560 in value from the Dolbeere School PTO for a new refrigerator for the staff room.
Second.
And also move that the school committee accept... Oh, do we have to do this first?
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? And that is also unanimous.
Also move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $175 in value from John McDermott and Gene Hendricks for a Squire Stratocaster electric guitar in case to be...
That's Janie Hendricks.
I'm sorry.
That's the sister of Jimi Hendrix. By the way, just let me know. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lyons. Electric guitar in case used by the music department.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion? Hendricks, really?
Yeah.
That's impressive.
So the Experience Hendricks. So there is a... So Janie Hendricks is the president, CEO of what they call... The company is now... They tour the country and play, they cover Hendrick's music. And so they were in Lynn, and they were staying locally in Lynnfield at the hotel there, and these giant Experience Hendrick buses, Hendrick's buses, they played in Lynn. And their tour manager, John McDermott, reached out and said that they would like to support our music department and would be willing to... Would like to know if they... We would like to receive a donation of a Stratocaster, an electric guitar. So they gave two, so they invited us onstage to accept this electric guitar, which was great. Great for our kids, great kind of notoriety, yeah.
Were you just there randomly?
No, I went to get the guitar.
Oh, okay. So you weren't just at the crowd? And they just saw you.
Doug Lyons, if you happen to be here, come on up. No. Come on down, no, no, no.
That is brilliant.
Yeah, so they gave a guitar to the Wakefield Public Schools and to the Lynn Public Schools. But it was a lot of fun, a lot of fun. And they... The Experience Hendricks group and John McDermott and Janie Hendricks could not be more thoughtful and more kind of supportive of music and the arts. So we're grateful.
That's brilliant.
Yeah, we're not going to set the guitar on fire or anything, right?
I hope not.
We're not going to have the full Hendricks experience.
I hope not.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, those in favor? And that is also unanimous. Well, thank you to Mr. McDermott, Hendricks, for the guitar, and also to the Dolbeere PTO for their donation of that refrigerator. I'm sure the staff will really appreciate it. So, wonderful. Moving on, I believe it is superintendent's remarks and comments.
Thank you very much. We welcome everybody back from vacation. We hope everyone enjoyed their April break. We're two days back, and it's like we never left. We're just... We're in it, and we're kind of moving pretty quickly. The calendars are pretty full. We welcome Amy McLeod, who's here with us tonight via Zoom. And Amy and I are going to talk about Vision of a Graduate and the NIASC accreditation here at the high school. Amy, would it be okay with you if we started off by sharing the video? A vision of a graduate?
Sure. Yeah, I don't know if you want to talk about NIASC first because it's one of the pieces that we're working on still, but we can go in the other direction.
No, let's do exactly as you suggest. We'll start off with NIASC. So I'll do just maybe a quick comment, and then I'll turn it over to you. So our NIASC accreditation, our decennial team was here a few months back, and they closed out their visit, or spent several days here interviewing staff members and visiting classrooms and interviewing students as well as faculty and staff. And I was here at our final meeting, the final meeting which we were invited to. And we were also interviewed and given feedback as part of the district leadership team. And the overwhelming positives in regard to the leadership, the administration, and the work that's being done at the administrative level, in regard to the teachers, and the work that they're doing in the classroom, and the relationships that they have with kids, were kind of really significant takeaways in the kind of the positive kind of category that I kind of left with from that final meeting. They provided a... So this is part of our NIASC accreditation. And so... But I can turn it over to Amy to talk more about the process and kind of the feedback that we've gotten.
Sure. So thank you, everybody, for having me join via Zoom tonight. I think Doug kind of laid us into the work that happened in the timeline. You know, it was a lot of work. Over the two years, we started with the collaborative conference several years ago, where they give... Where the school helps to identify some of the areas of growth. And then the committee comes back to reevaluate the school and see what progress and growth that we've made. I will say that it was a lot of lifting from a lot of hands. Diana Ho, Aaron Manzi, Dave Robinson, the three of them were sort of our core leaders throughout the NIASC process. And under their direction, we were able to break the work down even more by standards and have some teachers step up for each different standard and work on that. And for those of you who are familiar with the NIASC process, you know it's about gathering data. We've evolved when I first started doing NIASC many, many years ago. You know, we used to get buckets of work, right, in folders that they would kind of rifle through when they came to the visit. Now everything is electronically. Diana Ho made a lovely forward-facing website for the visitors so that they could get to all of our documents via a website. And they spent a few days at the school, a very thorough visit, and the report was written. They write the report as they're at the visit. They gave us a little brief summary at the end of their visit to the whole faculty. But on April 15th, I believe you got the communication forwarded from Doug. We received the communication that the commission, at the March 10th meeting, reviewed the report and approved it. And the good news is that they have given us continued accreditation at the high school. The only area that we... So there's a couple of good pieces of news in there. Obviously, continued accreditation is the best piece of news. But I think the highlight for us was that seven of the eight foundational elements had been met by the school. And the last time a full accreditation was done, or even at the collaborative conference, we were not at seven for eight. We were about at six or five for eight several years ago. So there's been a lot of work to be done in a few areas that needed focus and attention. And I think that we're super, super pleased with the outcomes. I know the faculty, Doug and Kara were in the room when the team presented to the faculty, and I could see the pride on teachers' faces just to hear that feedback, that the work that we've done in these areas specifically around curriculum and instruction, aligning curricular units, and aligning curriculum maps, I think has been a big piece of the work. And also working on a vision of the graduate, which we're going to talk about now. The one area that we still need to work on, that we are technically in probation for, is the school building. And obviously, they could see the school building, they could see it being built, they could hear it being built. But, you know, until the school building is actually built, that last foundational element will still be an area of growth for us. And once that is completed, we will not... We will no longer be in probation. So what will happen moving forward is I will have to give periodic reports on how the building is going so that we can stay in that level of, you know, solid accreditation, but moving toward that eighth element. So Doug, I don't know if you want to... Do you want me to talk just about a few of the commendations? I'm sorry, a few of the commendations before we move on, or?
That would be great.
Okay. So overall, I think the report had a lot of details about what they saw, everything from classrooms to interactions with teachers to feedback from students. But I want to... I just want to highlight some of the items that were pointed out. And proudly, I will say that there were a lot of commendations in this report that we were very, very proud of. I think some of the things included support and funding from the community to fund the building project. They noted that right away. They noted a commitment to providing high-quality instruction and state-of-the-art programs and services through a new building. They noted the relationships that faculty are building with students, something that we've been talking a lot about for the last few years. They noted supportive relationships, trusted adults, students identifying trusted adults in the building. They noted the prioritization of student social and emotional safety. They noted those practices, both in our student support services area and also in classrooms with teachers and the relationships that students have, including social, emotional learning principles and practices. They talked about the structure of instructional leadership, our ILT, our teacher leaders, our department leaders, our curriculum coordinators, who are working together to improve teaching and learning. They noted the strong professional development that we provide in teacher training, including the mentor program. They also talked about the vision of the graduate, which we're going to get into in a minute, the fact that we have started that work in the last two years, identifying what are some of the skills and knowledge and pieces that we want our students to leave high school with. They were very pleased with the curriculum maps, that we have forward-facing curriculum maps now that not only students, sorry, teachers can access, but families can access those as well, and that the fact that they're written in a consistent format so that they can... They're applicable across the school. So again, those are just some of the pieces that they highlighted, but I really think it speaks to the work that everybody's done to get us to this point. And so there were also a few recommendations for areas of growth. One of those is to... I think the biggest one is to continue to build on the vision of graduate. And so not only are we creating a vision of graduate, but we are also finding authentic opportunities to integrate that vision of a graduate into our day-to-day work. So that's sort of the next big piece of our work. So Doug, I think we can maybe talk about the vision, look at the vision of the graduate video, if you'd like to roll that?
That would be great. Ian, could we roll that?
In Wakefield Public Schools, we're asking you to be part of a vision, not just of a school district, but with a much more personal focus. We want you to help us see every student.
Not the numbers on my transcript.
Or their scores on my tests. But what we want each and every one of them to be.
As people.
But especially as Wakefield warriors. It's an initiative we've just begun called Vision of a Graduate. The effort started with a small committee of Wakefield Memorial High School educators.
It really kind of digs deeper into it and provides language that we can sort of apply to our curriculum and our work.
What we want them to be able to do, what we want them to think about, how we hope that they operate in a broader society once they move past school.
If I were a parent coming into this school, I would want to know that my student would be known and loved and nurtured over their four years, and I can say that both as a parent and as an educator. And so I think that the attributes in our vision of a graduate speak to students deeply, right? Deeply inherently who they are and who they're going to become.
That's the goal.
To show the ideal skills and dispositions that I will take with me when I leave Wakefield Memorial.
But vision of a graduate's process is just as important as its final product.
We really wanted to hear and respect any person's voice in this.
So that means students, their parents and families, the wider community, teachers, and that coming together and kind of sharing our ideas and what we hope and what we want and what our vision is really helped create a shared document that we can all get behind and that we can all be supportive of.
Always with a focus on our students.
What I need.
What I ask of my school community.
And what we want for them.
We are more than math teachers, science teachers, whatever. We are creating people that are able to go out beyond high school when they're not sitting in a classroom and still learn and problem-solve and think.
Students remember the skills that they've gotten from teachers, and they remember how teachers treated them, and they remember the love and care that was provided to them.
The effort yielded five key dispositions. A Wakefield Memorial High School graduate is a reflective purpose seeker.
Courageous problem solver.
Responsible communicator and collaborator.
Inspired lifelong learner.
And connected contributor. But that's not where this process ends. We've attached key performance outcomes to each of these dispositions and have just begun to present our vision outside the walls of our school to gather even more insight and perspective.
And the next part of this process is talking to the wider community, really getting parents involved and community members so that they're understanding when you talk about Wakefield, it's just not about the content standards that Desi likes to talk about, but it's really thinking about putting out citizens into our community that'll be effective lifelong learners, who will be effective community members, and who will be value-added to the world around them.
Expanding this conversation from the high school to all of our students, I think we have the potential to really grow and focus in on the skills that are being developed for our younger students at the middle school and also our elementary students as well.
Because to meet our vision of the graduate, this effort must touch every corner of our community.
More often than you might guess, these students come back and have an impact on this very community.
Long-term, they're going to be out there owning these businesses, being at the front face of many of the sort of places that you go to on the street. Maybe they'll come back and stay in the community, or whether they move on, we're creating people who are able and are positive impacts in that community.
Our students are our future in that anything we have and hope for in our lived experiences is going to be directed by them someday.
Our next step for vision of a graduate starts with you. Read about our process and our product, and think about how you can reinforce these values to help every Wakefield warrior grow.
Thank you, Ian. Amy, I don't know if you saw that real time with us. I know you've seen it a dozen times, but...
Yes, I did.
Do you want to talk a little bit about that process of making that?
Sure. So the video, we hoped would capture the very messy work into a very clean presentation of how we got to where we are right now with the vision of the graduate. The work started over, you know, about two years ago when we started by just having a faculty meeting on one of our professional development days, really just starting with a list of what are some of the attributes that we'd like to see in our graduates. And we had lists from small groups from the faculty, you know, 100, 110 people sitting in the cafeteria that we, over time, were able to whittle down. We were able to look at other schools' visions of graduates that NIASC puts out as sort of models and look at those. We got feedback from parents in the community, we put surveys together for the students, and we tried to really gather and ask the questions of everybody, the same questions, is that, you know, what do we want our students to be able to do? What do we want them to look like? What skills and attributes would we like them to have once they leave the doors of Wakefield Memorial High School? And so the video kind of captured that work, right? The people who spoke on the video are the people who were our steering committee for the vision of the graduate work, it was teacher-driven. They helped come up with the professional development plans, they helped with the surveys, they helped gather the data, and then they helped cull all of that information down into the pages that Ian actually can put up on the visual. Ian, if you could put up the two visuals that I sent, it distilled down, yes, into that visual, which is the five... And then, sort of, that's the overview of the five areas. And then the column visual really breaks down exactly what each area is. So what does it mean to be a reflective purpose seeker? What does it mean to be a courageous problem solver? And so, you know, it really gives us a definition, you know, which could potentially be transferable to a rubric, right? Where you really start to break down what something looks like, then you'll be able to at some point introduce it to the community. And then at some point down the road, we would hope that the community, the school community, would be able to assess ourselves and assess students and have students assess themselves in terms of how are we doing in these areas in terms of preparing kids for the future. So that's really what we hope the video would do. I think that these documents that Ian has put up are draft documents. The next step of the work is sort of refining these. Actually, we're going to talk about them in our ILT at the high school tomorrow. And then, you know, moving forward, working with Doug and Kara and some of the other schools to talk about, you know, are these transferable down to the other levels? Is this something that they want to adapt, maybe more student-friendly language for younger students, but really to give us a solidified version, much like our mission statement did for many, many years. This is sort of another iteration of a mission statement, but it's student-facing, and it really is more reflective, not just as an overall mission, but of the attributes and skills that we want to see from students.
Thank you, nicely done. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think that's... No, I was going to say, I think that's sort of it in a nutshell. If there are maybe questions that I can answer, or I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. Any questions for Principal McLeod? No, seeing none. Mr. Markham?
No, not so much of a question, Amy, but really a huge thank you to you and the team. This has been going on, as you say, for a few years now, and this is an extraordinary, you know, amount of work to do. And it shouldn't go, you know, understated in what you're representing tonight in a very succinct, you know, 15 minutes as representative of hours and hours of work. So thanks to you and the team for doing this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that, Amy. I kind of read through the vision of a graduate, kind of the public school's mission statement sort of exists within that larger framework. And so it's nice to see, I think of the mission statement as being a little bit aspirational. It's something that we're aiming for. And so to actually see you sort of put pen to paper, and I see steps in sort of having that graduate, you know, having the person that walks across the stage, you know, be a vision of that in many ways. And so I think we do that work well now, and I think it helps to sort of have things, some guidelines, there's some things to aim for. So absolutely messy because we have, I mean, every student's an individual, right? So how do you sort of narrow those bands? But you and the team have done a fantastic job.
Administratively, we would like to, from the district level, from me, I would like to say thank you to Amy and to the steering committee that kind of worked on this project, and for all of the teachers and students that were involved. It's great seeing, you know, the students in the cafeteria. It's great. There's one thing to hear what the NIASC team reported, it's another thing entirely to get a glimpse into, you know, the cafeteria during the school day, or to hear from Meg Delory, or from Kim Conley, or, you know, the people that are just Pat Brennan and Diana Ho. I mean, just amazing, you know, John Hanren, just, just really. And we could have included, that's a five-minute video that, like Tom said, summarizes the beginning of the work we're doing around vision of a graduate. But the beginning of kind of launching this to the community, to the school faculty and to the community. But it doesn't... It's amazing to, in five minutes, to summarize what is a couple of years of work, right? And so I feel like it's just so heart-filling for, I think, us administrators to watch, district administrators, to watch this video. We can watch it over and over. It feels... It's just, it's great. Nicely done. Nicely done.
Good job. I appreciate all the multimedia stuff that evidently the district is in the habit of putting out nowadays. Makes information fun to digest and interesting, so.
No question, no question.
Anything else?
That's it from us, Amy. That covers vision of a graduate and the NIASC accreditation, so thanks so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Before I sign off, I'll say if you enjoy the student voices, you should go see Hades Town this weekend because the two voices are students who are featured in Hades Town. So it's playing all weekend at the Calvin.
I believe there's a 4:30 show on Thursday, too.
Yes, that's my plug, and I'm sticking to it. Enjoy, everyone, thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you there. Thank you. Our high school principal does such a nice job, right? And is always, always quick to give credit and not to take credit. But it's, a high school principal gig is not an easy job, and we're grateful to have her here as the high school leader. And again, the work that the steering committee did and all the teachers that participated, because we had a visiting team of 12 that made their way freely around the school and dropped into classrooms and visited and talked with students. So they were really eager to not only, to hear a range of perspectives and so, and to get the feedback that we got, was really, I think it really represents the work of the teachers, the work of the administration. So, again, nicely done. So appreciate that. An update on idling. I wanted, I'm channeling my best Tim O'Brien, he couldn't be here tonight. He had surgery on his hand and, you know, would be here if he could. You know, he always wants to be at work, which is a blessing and a challenge. But update on idling signs, I know we talked about this. Kevin asked about it maybe three meetings ago. We had said, I think when Tim was here, he shared that signs were being made up. He reported that signs are, have done, they're completed, and they should be up in place all by the end of this week. So we're in good space there, but I just wanted to follow up and not miss that opportunity. My last bullet and final piece is just a school choice proposal. So I shared information with you all. Every year by June 1st, every district in Massachusetts is required to opt, not into, but out of, school choice if the district is not going to participate in school choice. And so we've been kind of thinking about ways to, that we might be able to participate in this space. In the district Tom that's in, they have a robust choice program. So I've talked with fellow superintendents that are in the space, I talked with Tom Markham about this, and one of the things we were talking about is, you know, could this be a potential benefit for faculty and staff that are in the district if they wanted to try to get their children into a choice lottery? Doesn't guarantee them a spot, but what it would do is if they are a teacher at the high school, for example, and they have a child at the middle school, and they think it would be a great opportunity for them to attend the middle school, right? And, you know, they could enter their child into this lottery, and if selected, they could attend the middle school. So this is a, so what I've shared with the committee is kind of an architecture to accept just two students per grade from grade two through grade 12. That's 22 students in total, right? 22 students in total, so two students at grade two, two students at grade three, two students at grade four. In the proposal, I'm not specifying what elementary schools. But the question is, could, if there, if we could find two available seats, which I think we can, right? Two available seats at grade two, two at grade three, two at grade four, two at grade five, two at grade six, seven, eight, also nine, 10, 11, 12. So total, it would be 22 students, right? And so some people ask, well, why two? Well, the notion is, it's a very simple idea. It's the idea of starting small and learning by doing, right? And so this would be if the committee thought that this was a good idea and we decided to move forward and kind of, and develop a choice program, we, the goal would be we would start small and learn by doing. So, you know, why would we leave some grades out? Because we are anticipating that those grades are going to be pretty full, right? And so K1, we think are going to be pretty full, so we didn't include them, those grades in the list. This is still very much in a draft form. So the committee could say, Doug, we like this idea, we'd like you to include grade one, or we'd like you to not include grade one and two, but just three and four, right? And so there's some flexibility in regard to maybe expanding, not, I would urge you, or just not to expand very much, right? But expand a little bit and try to keep the numbers at a manageable size so that, again, we can learn by doing. The other benefit of this program is that when students' choice in, they come with a per pupil expenditure. They come with a sum of money, which, correct me if I'm off, Tom, but I believe it's $5,000. So in this case, we would potentially, if we filled all 22 seats, that would be $110,000 add to the budget, right? Which is another creative way, not only to create a potential benefit for faculty and staff, but it also is a potential way for us to kind of increase revenue into the district. Because we're looking at kind of the financial uncertainty that's happening, both at the federal and state level, and we think that, you know, $100,000 isn't going to be an end-all, but every little bit helps. You know, this would be on scale, on the scale of a grant that we might get from the Department of Ed for our Acceleration Academy, or to accelerate our curriculum that Cara has kind of secured in the last number of years. So that's kind of the idea behind it. Happy to take any questions that people might have. Yes, sir.
Kevin?
Hypothetical question. So let's say we agree to, to the two people per, two spots per grade.
Yes.
Right, grade two through grade 12. Let's say that when we look at our, like, at the population, at the spots, like in the Galvin, let's say grade, just making it up, let's say grade six is full. Like, does, does that mean that we would still have two potential, you know, kids coming in, grade two, three, four, five, and then we could say, no one's coming in grade six because we, because our numbers are higher in that area?
So in our plan, we have to specify the number of seats that we are offering.
Okay.
So if we're saying two, then we say two by grade, right? So you have to specify the number of seats.
Okay.
So if we say two, we would have to accommodate two. So if, for example, the school committee wanted more data to understand exactly the class sizes at every grade, right, to kind of, to think more about this, to say, Doug, maybe we want to take six offline. We would provide that data to kind of help the committee make an informed decision about what grades might be in, what grades might be out.
Okay, so I'll ask question B. So let's say hypothetically, we raise that number to 10, 10 per grade, which is a lot, right? That's huge numbers.
That's a huge number.
A hypothetical question.
Yeah.
So let's say you just, we just magically threw the number 10 out there. That means that we would be on the, on the hook, might be the wrong way of saying it.
We would be committed.
We would be committed to taking 10 students for each grade in that particular year.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Students would have to apply and apply for that grade level and meet the criteria for admission.
Okay.
And admission, admission is blind effectively as well. We do not know a discipline record of students, we do not know students', you know, special education status.
What criteria is there if it's blind?
Well, are they applying for, for, for a grade in, in a school, middle school, high school, that we have opened up a seat for? But like, say, say we use your guy, your hypothetical 10, or even your hypothetical two in grade six, and no one applies in grade six.
Yeah.
We don't get to say, well, we now have four seats in grade seven.
Right.
So if no one applies for the openings, then there's no lottery for that.
Anything else, Kevin?
I had a follow-up question, and then some more to add on. So there is a requirement to be a mass resident, or is it even eligible if a teacher lives in New Hampshire?
So you need to be, I believe, a mass resident.
Okay.
Yep, so, yeah.
So in terms of feedback, I mean, I've watched the school committee for many years have this discussion, and it pretty much is the same thing every year. So the fact that this is different tells me a lot of thought went into it. I mean, I've heard year after year, you know, it's pretty much the same thing, like, we don't want to participate in school choice. I think there are many grades in the district that do have space, it doesn't mean every grade does, and I think it's a creative way to, you know, bring some additional dollars into the district. We're going to have a brand-new high school. The high school has a lot of capacity beyond where we are today, and, you know, I do think that, you know, that could bring additional dollars into the district. So I appreciate all the effort that went into putting together the proposal. I know you went through a couple of iterations on it. One was looking more just at the high school, the other one's looking at just the two, even across grades two through 12, and I support the proposal that you're putting in front of me.
Kevin?
Sorry. Could we, like, so it's a blind lottery, right? But can we just say we just want teachers' kids? Like, we can't do that.
No, you can't.
So we can't, we can't, like...
They would, they would be in a lottery like everybody else.
Got it. And you can't look at the last names.
No, sir.
It is completely blind.
That would not be a lottery. That would be...
No, you said something about staff.
Yeah.
Like, we want to bring them in.
What we would do is, staff would have an opportunity to be part of a lottery.
Got it.
Not a guaranteed part of a choice or guaranteed admittance. They would be, you know, they have the potential to be part of a lottery.
Okay.
And we did look at, we looked at a few iterations of this. We looked at just high school, and we looked at, you know, a wider range, and we looked at a smaller number, right? And I talked with Tom about this, and, you know, initially, we were talking about, you know, 10 students at the high school. And Tom, we talked a little bit about this, and he shared his experience in the, he's a school business administrator in another district, and shared his experience kind of doing this with a larger number, right? And so we, if we are successful, we might develop a larger program. But I think right now, the hope or the plan is that we want to learn by doing. So the other, the question that hasn't been asked yet is if we participate in one year, what is our commitment to students? If we admit students, we're committed so that they can be here until, until they decide to leave or graduate, one of the two. If the committee decided next year to opt out, then we would have been kind of a one year, yes, and then we would opt out next year, and the students that are with us, if they chose to stay, would stay until they graduate, right? So that's a, that's a question. I know Kevin has a question.
Yeah. Dr. Scalo?
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to make a comment, you know, Pete mentioned that this has been voted each year not to participate, and I think there was good reason for why that was, and just want to kind of, it wasn't just a rubber stamp, I think, each time, having done it 10 times. You know, I think that, you know, sometimes the financial, the financial, you know, promises that follow it, I think are overstated in a lot of ways. I'll save my overall comments if this actually comes to a vote. In general, it's not something that I generally support, and I'll share why if we have that opportunity. But as, you know, as Dr. Lyons had mentioned, you know, once you accept a student, you're committed to them through graduation, and while they may come with $5,000, the cost educating them could be much more. You know, they could require services or other things that we would need to purport to, to do. I think it's really easy to, you know, come to Wakefield to become a student, and that's to become a taxpayer here. And so I would encourage anyone who wants to enjoy the education that we provide to come here, just like everyone is sitting around the table, that at least on the committee does, is to pay taxes here. So, kind of gives you a hint of where I'm kind of leading, at least in terms of my perception, but I would really caution us not necessarily pursue this really easily. I think it's been historically not done for really good reasons, and I'll articulate those later, but just kind of my two cents.
Thank you. Melissa?
Can you talk a little bit about why just grades two to 12 and not pre-K?
Sure.
Kindergarten or first?
Pre-K is not part of the school choice, right? And so, in our pre-K, we're kind of busting at the seams at Doyle. So that's why not, if pre-K were a part of choice, we're just...
We're capacitive.
We don't have any space there now, right? We have two pilot classrooms at Woodville, so that's, so, but pre-K is not part of this. Our K numbers right now look a little bit lower than they had been, but I, every year those numbers go up, so we're just trying to give space. And we know that pre-K, K, and one are really, we want to be a little protective of those class sizes and those spaces. So that's why not pre-K. Pre-K is not part of it, but if it were, but that's why not K and one. Yeah. So, I'm also happy to address the comments that Kevin made, if they're a question, if there was a question about that.
I sort of, I had a question, sort of, similar to Melissa's, just in that, as we talk about budget, as we've talked about sort of Doyle busting at the seams, it's not just the Doyle, it's, it seems to be like we're filling classes sort of in elementary. And I know that that ebbs and flows, but it feels like, at least in my own anecdotal personal experience, that I have seen some classes reaching the limits to what has been comfortably stated by the school committee. And that isn't just a number, that is reflective in a classroom, that is an educator that has to, you know, one year they might have, you know, 20 students, another year they might have 25. Like, there's, there's a lot of pull to that. And so I worry, in, so, in the discussions that we've had about enrollment, it feels like it's up, and we know that there's development going on. Why are we comfortable at the elementary level? I kind of get the high school discussion because I know that when students sort of leave the Galvin, their avenues sort of, they have other opportunities, whether it's the VoC or, or, you know, some of the other, like, parochial schools that are around, but there are some other options, and so maybe our enrollment decreases slightly from kids moving from the Galvin to the high school. So I'm curious why, I guess I'm curious why elementary is sort of on there, as I've heard other discussions that we have, we're concerned about the size of enrollment.
Yeah, I think for, for two reasons. One, I think the longer that students are with us, the better opportunity that we have to be really successful with them, right? That's one. And the other is, just this notion of just trying to give, you know, lead time or as much kind of space to, you know, a faculty member that might have a third grader or, and we think we can make that a combination. This was something, Kevin brought this up, and I know Kevin's very consistent about, you know, where he kind of stands with the benefit for, because we discussed this during bargaining, is this idea of some, some districts allow faculty and staff to bring their teeth, their, their children to school as a benefit. And so, you know, that never was formally proposed in our last round of bargaining, but there was still, and we still receive a lot of question or interest in, would that ever be a possibility? And we're thinking this might be a middle ground to, to learn how to do that, right? Or to open up and create that potential benefit. Reading has done this, right? So other districts, this is not, we're not a unique, we're not alone in this work, right? And so, like I said, Tom did this. So first of all, if a student comes, so the, the challenge, if a student comes and has certain needs, yeah, that can be a challenge. But if a student moved into the district and had needs, that would be a challenge as well. You know, we also get, we're reimbursed for special education costs, right? In addition to the $5,000, right? So that's something that doesn't always make the radar. So, so this is not a panacea. This is not, this, I'm not, we're not proposing this as something that is an end-all, be-all. What we're saying is, we're entering a precarious time, we're also entering a time when faculty and staff have, again, repeatedly approached myself, Christine, Cara, and said, hey, it would be great if. And we agree, it would be great if, but we don't have unlimited space, we have limited space. So which is why the small number of students per grade. And again, if school committee chose to kind of say, I would be more comfortable supporting this if we didn't place students in elementary, we could make that adjustment. If the school committee decided that this isn't the right time to do this and we should opt out again, you all have the right to do that as well.
Kevin?
Is the disadvantage of not just accepting teachers' kids into the district and not opting into school choice, is the rationale for not going with that option in that we would get less, like, total numbers, which would cause us, because I assume the benefit is obviously, like, precarious financial situation, is what we're talking about here, right? With the fiscal environment, so if we bring in... So if we bring in, like, the $110,000 number. So, like, would accepting, because I definitely see the argument of offering the benefit for teachers, for staff, kids that come here. Could we just do that and still get that benefit with the $5,000 per kid?
We wouldn't get, so if, if we.
Oh, okay. You don't get anything for that. That's just the benefit.
You wouldn't get.
I got you.
So school choice, you get the $5,000. I got you. Okay.
You wouldn't get, so, so again, if, and I know Kevin spoke to what, you know, if a student came with certain needs and, yeah, so we have the potential to be reimbursed in a per pupil, but also if a student had special education needs, would be, we have, could potentially be reimbursed for that as well. And so, again, this is not, there's no panacea. There's no magic to this, right? This is just, this is, in my mind, this is not different than being thoughtful about applying for a grant that has also a benefit to kids, the community, and to faculty and staff, right? And so I don't want that to be lost in the, in the, in the communication here. Yeah. But, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Melissa. One of the things I think is, as a perspective for us to be, to be, you know, to be thinking about is, school, school choice is an opportunity to really fill empty seats, not really empty rooms. I mean, we don't have any empty rooms, first of all. That's for sure, as Stephen made the point. But across, across the spectrum, across, you know, effectively K through 12, or in this case, you know, 2 through 12, to find 22 places is not, is not that big of a lift, first of all. And, and really, by putting one or two students per grade in, in any of these places, it isn't driving the cost. Like, if there are 18 kids, let's pick on high school, there are 18 kids in a high school classroom. And, and, and we're now going to make it, you know, 19 or 20. We're not, we're not hiring a new teacher. We're not doing a new room. We're not buying new, you know, furniture or technology to be able to, to really make that. So it, it's, it's something that, that, you know, the proposal that the administration's bringing forward and had been brought, by the way, to the, to the finance subcommittee. We did discuss this at the, at the subcommittee level. Obviously, the, the vote would need to be taken, you know, every year. So if we were inclined to give this a try, it would be a one-year try. And one, we'd need to see if there's any interest, which is, which is, you know, tough in year one, because by the time we would make this vote and promote it and market it, there could be little to no interest. You know, you don't know what you don't know yet, right? So this, this isn't even real. But, you know, the, the opportunity to continue to, to diversify our, our classes, to continue to, to support students that in some ways, and this is one of the things that we discussed at the, at the subcommittee, you know, level, is, is maybe there's a student out there from a surrounding community that, that is in, you know, that is in, in real need of a new shot. And we could be exactly that, that place in time that, that helps that, that kid succeed. And there's an added benefit of, of, you know, of some financial resource, you know, you know, coming, are coming to us. And in giving it a one or, one or maybe, you know, you know, two-year go with the, the opportunity, you know, just for the dollars, as, as Doug said, at 22, we're looking at, you know, if we filled them, of course, it would be a, you know, $110,000 plus whatever special ed, you know, increment that there may be. So it's not a panacea, but it's something that we need to continue to look at for not only diversifying population, but supporting the financial future.
Sure. Pete, I think you had your, oh, Melissa.
So if we, if we do it in the first year, what, how do we know it's successful? And how would, how would we come at it next year and say, okay, this really didn't work for us, and here's why? Like, what are, what are the standards that we're using to kind of measure how it's working?
Well, I think one of the ways we would measure it is the, the success the students are having here at school. I mean, I think that that would be the most significant thoughtful way to do it, right? Is, you know, what does growth look like for students? And it would be individual for individual students, not a criterion reference.
Right.
But more kind of individual. You know, when students arrive, we're, you know, what, we're, at what levels were they roughly performing at? And then what does, you know, performance, what does improvement look like for them? I think that's probably the biggest question from my perspective. You know, how do they acclimate into the community? Do they feel like they belong? They feel like they're part of the community? You know, so there's, there's the social-emotional piece, there's the academic piece, there's the, you know, I mean, this is a, for, for faculty that have the benefit, where they can bring their kids, it's, sometimes it's fantastic, sometimes it's, it's hard, right? It's hard to kind of come and go in a community, or come and participate in athletics, or participate in theater, and, and then have to hop in a car and drive to the next town over, right? Yeah.
If I could throw onto that, that one of the, because that's a terrific question, Melissa. One of the things that we already have in place and have a very strong track record with, it wouldn't be that, you know, dissimilar to, to our work with, with Mecca students. We already have a really good track record of acclimating, you know, Mecca students into the, into the program. We knows where, we know where some of those ebbs and flows are. We know where, where some of the, you know, the pressure points are. And it wouldn't be very different in terms of introduction of, of, you know, really non-residents into the student body. We have that body of experience already.
Pete? And then Kevin had that out.
I'm just curious, based in other towns and cities that participate, if we know, like, from the seats they offer, do they, do they have a bunch that don't get filled? Do they, do people just line up and fill them? I'm just, I have no wide concept of how fast these seats go.
I think the answer is yes to both. I think depending on the runway that people have, you know, Tom's comment about it being this late in the year, and if we do a lottery, it'll likely be late May, early June, right? You know, we, we would not kind of be able to market this or get it out there very wide, you know? You know, and it's, and again, it's just a small number of seats, right? So I, I think, so in that case, so because we're later in the year, I think participation, we might just fill the, I'm anticipating that we would fill the 22. Because again, it's two per grade. And, you know, but we might not, right? Because it, because the number's small, and it's a potential to fill them all, but because it's late, there's a potential that some might not be filled, like, like, like was stated. If, if we didn't have two applicants in grade three, it doesn't mean that we're still at 22 in the aggregate. It means that those two second-grade seats aren't filled. We had no applicants at that level. Done, moving on, right? And then we, we do move on. And then we kind of, students would come in, and we would, you know, pay attention and track, monitor, monitor their progress and their, kind of, how they're doing. And we would kind of revisit this likely in January, and then kind of think about how, if we might open it up again or not open it up again.
Kevin.
Do we have to pay for transportation?
No.
Or the parents have that?
Transportation is not a cost that we would need to pick up.
Ellen?
So, three things, you know, the reasons for doing this. I love what you had, you'd mentioned previously about giving the opportunity to have students to kind of supplement what we do with the Mecca program. That's, that's a great reason to be doing, right? But the other, the other reason we talked about was teachers being able to bring their students to school in the district that, well, the chance, the opportunity to.
Yeah.
Right? But I guess that's, that's a far cry from, like, we're talking about other districts that maybe just allow teachers to enroll their, I don't know, there are some districts that actually do that, that allow them just to enroll outside of a school choice situation. And the other part of that is, you know, the teachers, if they wanted, you know, an opportunity at that, their school district, where they live, has to participate in the intraschool program. It's not.
No. No.
So that, that piece of receiving the money from school choice, would it be coming from the sending school district?
Travels, travels with the student.
It comes off the state aid. It's a state aid calculation. It's not a bill that we send to the sending town or the community of residents, because the town isn't actually sending a student. It, it comes off a calculation of, of chapter 78.
And then the last thing, with the, with the spots already being open, you said we're not adding teachers, we're not doing it, because there'd be spots open. I just would, I'm curious about, I guess, does it really, is it really that much of a, I guess not, an income generator, but that $5,000, does that really actually offset our per pupil expenditure by any amount, or does it get kind of washed and taken away, and it's not really a net, net gain with this program? So I, like, I guess I would need a little more information about that, to see if that's actually, that's actually true. Are we getting that $5,000? Is it actually taking care of, you know, is it a $5,000 net positive? Or is some of that going to our per pupil expenditure?
I can share from working with some fellow superintendents, it's, it's been a net add. And, and Tom can probably speak to this as well. Is that fair to say, Tom?
Yeah. Yeah, it would be, I guess, it certainly is not going to come close. $5,000 or even with the special education, you know, you know, increment, isn't going to come close to the cost of educating, you know, a Wakefield resident.
Right.
You know, even if you take the total budget, divide the number of students, right? That becomes a very overly simplified, you know, per pupil cost. So it isn't even going to come close to what's going to be in the $20,000 plus range for our per pupil cost. But it isn't also intended to be.
Right.
That's the, you know, the analogy on using, using this as a supplemental income to support really empty seats, that the cost of doing business shouldn't go up because of these students. It's, it's, if we start to, if we, if we start to actually needing to do that, then we have to have a conversation with, obviously, the administration has to drive that, but there has to be an appreciation because the, you know, going back to the, to the origins of school choice, which is probably 30 years ago now, the $5,000 hasn't increased by the legislature from day one. It has been $5,000 the entire existence of the program, and that is by design. I don't think the legislature has any appetite at all to make this a recruiting program. They're not trying to, or the state's not trying to encourage students to leave their, their, their hometown. So it really is about, you know, to be able to supplement what, what could be the empty seats versus, versus, you know, you know, adding any sort of real cost, you know, in, into the district. So does it come close to the, the actual, you know, per pupil cost? No, it doesn't. That would be, but if we were to, if, if we were to bring in $110,000 by filling 22 seats, that's a cost of a teacher. That's a teacher and, and benefits, clearly, right? And it can't be driven by money, but it also, we also can't just, knowing what's ahead, the opportunity to bring both of these opportunities to, to fill empty seats and to bring in additional revenue needs to be a little, needs to be a little, you know, you know, tighter.
Pete?
Is there an enrollment deadline, or can, once the school year starts, can people still enroll as long as we have a slot open?
Well, June 1st, we have to opt in or out, right? So we have the June 1st deadline. And so we, we would create the, when the enrollment period would begin and end. And so that's my understanding. And so as part of the application process, we just need to make that very public to start. And so, yes, that's, that's my understanding.
And one could argue that our poor marketing could benefit people in district who don't need marketing to know what that opportunity is.
That's one way to look at it, I guess.
Yeah, no, I was just, I was just saying, like, if it's not, like, you know, if you're not going to, like, I don't know, I don't want to pick on a city or town in Massachusetts, but if you're not going to a city or town that maybe their schools aren't even close to Wakefield and Parisson, and marketing it to them, you know, staff who are familiar with it may have an opportunity to catch it before maybe word of mouth, or checking the state website.
Good point.
I would hope that we would be above board. That is above board. Well, I mean, it all goes on that, I mean, there's a state webpage, which is really the place where it all goes. I mean, there's one source of truth where all, I went to it, you know, prior to this meeting, there's like a single source of truth for all school choice in Massachusetts. So it's not like we're going to pay to put an ad on the Globe. Or the item. Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
So we, again, to speak to your, the timing about acceptance, in the, in the draft school choice application that I shared with the committee, you know, we would open it up at a given date and close it at a given date. We open it, accept applications to our lottery, and then close it. And then we move forward, right?
I think this discussion is in advance of when we normally make our school choice selection, which is.
It's well ahead of June 1st.
Yep.
So it is, well, not, not, it's actually not.
It's coming.
Too far ahead. It's, it's coming pretty quickly. So we have, what, two more meetings? So we would need to, because we also need to have a hearing, right? And so, so we would need to kind of have a public posting to give people an opportunity to kind of weigh in on this.
We do every year. It has to be a public hearing.
Yeah, it has to be done every year.
Every year as well. So it's, that's not.
It's done every year when we opt out.
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So is this something that administration is thinking that we would mull over?
So our, the email that I shared, we're, we're making this proposal this evening, and we would like to get feedback by the next meeting to move forward, because it's going to take some time for us to kind of, you know, get the draft application out of the draft phase and into the, kind of, the working phase, and, and to also get this information out, right?
So you want us at the next meeting to advise?
Yes, sir.
To go forward?
Yes, sir.
I'm mostly thinking, because Kevin was going to reserve discussion until we, Dr. Piscadlo was going to reserve discussion until we were actually doing an up or down. So I wasn't sure if that was sometime in the future that we're thinking, or?
No, I mean, we would like to try to do this, this year. I mean, we need to make the vote anyway.
Yep.
So, and, and again, if we're giving ourselves lead time, we'll know, this will be a more informed vote than we've ever made.
Would it make sense, I don't know if this is allowed, would it make sense to have the public hearing at the same time we propose going ahead with it?
I would say no.
Or you can't do that.
I would say no, because that doesn't give anyone any lead time to.
Okay.
I would say no. You, you need to give, you need to approve, you know, let the, get the application out, let people apply with the application. And, and we wouldn't have that ready.
Right.
Until the committee gave the thumbs up.
Got you. Yes, Pete?
Mr. Chair, does Dr. Piscadlo want to offer up his comments to us this evening?
I think he could. He could.
Pete, you just stay nice and calm.
No, I would say unless anyone, like, wanted to make a motion on the current suggestion. There isn't one sort of in our motion sheet, but that doesn't preclude anyone from doing that. Or we could, or we could have a motion on it in the next one, if anyone felt like they needed to sort of digest anything beyond what was supplied and sort of our materials.
So, just to two, two things. One may be, you know, a point of technicality, that it actually isn't on the agenda tonight for a vote.
Yeah.
It's on as a presentation. So that's, that's a bit of a thing for those that may be watching. But secondly, and perhaps, you know, more importantly, any feedback, this, this would be at a point of conversation that we'd, that we'd have at the next subcommittee meeting, finance and facilities, that would help inform whatever the superintendent, the business administrator may need to do for the, on the vote night. So I think that there's a couple of opportunities for us to, you know, improve or react to whatever feedback we, we may get.
Yeah.
So if we made the, I'm just looking at the calendar, the, the, the May meetings are, what, 13 and 27?
Sounds right.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So maybe if we had the public hearing on, and the vote on the 27th, with opportunity to provide feedback at the May 13 meeting.
Yeah, that would be in line with when we've made previous.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And it would give us a chance to have a subcommittee meeting, provide also.
That would be great. That would be great.
-the administration with feedback there.
Great.
That'd be great.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate, appreciate the time. And that's it for my comments tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, Chair's comments is Bullet Number One would be to welcome new committee members, but I think we already welcomed Alex and appreciate sort of the points you've already made this evening, a value add. So thanks for joining. Under that, under that piece of the bullet, I would mention now that I would expect that at our next meeting, what I'm hoping we can do is vote for new committee positions. So that should be chair, vice chair, doc, I don't know what the technical name is, but document signer for the warrants.
The warrant signer, yeah.
Yep. So those, and then I think what we can do maybe in parallel for that, for folks, because we're all pretty, we've been here for a little bit, minus Alex, but it's not that hard, is we could maybe just at the same time, give thought to subcommittee assignments and maybe sort of drive them to, trying to think how that would work out, well, give consideration to it. We all know sort of the, the different subcommittees, and I would say just make a plan to rank them and how you've done them in the past, like 1, 2, 3, or something like that. And also to liaison positions, whether it's HRC, CPAC, youth, youth council, anything like that. So just have that be front of brain. I didn't want to do that this evening, mostly because I just remember as a new committee member, it just drove me crazy that I was asked to vote on the first night, that I sort of sat in the seat at the table. So I think just waiting one, one week, we could, I think that would be good for our next meeting.
Also, as a point of clarity, if I may, are, we are operating bylaws, so to speak, that we now, we now elect officers at the meeting after town meeting.
Town day, town meeting.
Town meeting, yeah.
Yep. That is true as well. Okay. So keep that front of brain and think about that. Next would be superintendent evals with a motion. Last time that we met, which was three weeks ago, sort of I gave a very quick rundown of our, what I had culminated or put together from independent evaluations from everyone, and sort of gave what I thought was an overview of that. And then just thought about if anyone needed time to, I know it was in the same evening, so people have sort of had time to sit with it, sort of read through it. And as the process is public, I would just open up for any sort of comment that folks had, possibly about the evaluation itself, or sort of for the superintendent. And so we'll leave that space open now.
Should I make the motion before discussion or, or do you want feedback given before the motion?
I would say you can make the motion and then we can discuss.
Okay. Move that the school committee approved the evaluation of Superintendent Douglas Lyons, second.
Motion's being seconded. Any discussion?
Um, yeah. I'm sorry I tabled the vote for last week. I just want time to read through the evaluation. So, and I think I've given personal feedback about the different standards, not even other school committee members. You know, I definitely agree with that Dr. Lyons has been very, very impressive with community communication. I think that heard a lot of good feedback, you know, our own personal and our, you know, how we see Doug communicate with the community, you know, I've always thought was very, you know, top notch. You know, I've worked as a teacher with multiple superintendents, so I've got to have experience, not that I've worked with that many, but reasonable comparison. And also I think the managerial operations piece, I think, very strong, very well organized. One thing I would just give feedback to Dr. Lyons and, and also really to the whole committee too, just to kind of keep our eyes on the ball, does, you know, in the end, we're a school system, like, we're looking at academic outcomes. And I know there's like four indicators, and one of the indicators is like, you know, instruction and like academic outcomes. And I, I think personally that that's by far the most important indicator, even though they're all technically equal in the evaluation system. So, yeah, I would just, I think one feedback would be that, you know, we'll look at assessments, you know, not just NCAS, but like just total student assessments, eye-ready scores, but also, you know, even potential, you know, teacher feedback, student feedback, you know, for instructional objectives, I think would be, would be appreciated. So just my personal feedback on that particular standard. Thank you. That's all I got.
Appreciate that. Melissa?
I think like moving forward, there's an opportunity for us to look at evaluations in light of the vision of a graduate and, and try and take those, that terminology and, and those sections and kind of integrate those into what our, our goals are, not just for the superintendent, but also for student improvement plans and school improvement plans, sorry, moving forward. That's my only-
That's a great idea. Yeah. Anyone else?
Just in, in, you know, in the broad strokes, and I mentioned this at the, at the last meeting, but wanted to again thank you, Stephen, that this is not an easy task to, to bring us, bring us together in, in one common space and present one representative document. So that, that can't go without saying, it's a little like herding cats, and I'll be, I will fess up to be one of those cats you needed to herd. So, but it just, so that, that's a thing. So thank you for, for that work. Also, to, to one of the points, one of the talking points that Kevin just mentioned, as in a cue to us perhaps, is one of the things that I think we need to make sure, we as a committee of seven, need to make sure is that we provide this sort of feedback on a more regular basis. We've not provided an assessment in this way to Dr. Lyons in two years. And while it's all been a busy two years, there's a lot going on, and it's not a, it's, it's nothing good, bad, or indifferent about it, but I think one of the things that would have been probably incredibly helpful, even for the community, never mind for our superintendent, is that two years ago, we were in the height of a COVID and, and all of that. And now what has been reflected in some of this work is, is reflective of, of post-COVID times. But the leadership that Dr. Lyons and the, and all the administration and all the staff provided during the COVID years is, can't, is lost in this, which hasn't been a strong indicator. Now, it seems like 100 years ago, but it was really only a couple. So I, I think that's just something that has been a, this is a good instrument, and we've done a fine job to bring it to this, to this place, but I don't think it's entirely representative of the superintendent or his work, or, or the representativeness of the staff in total for what has been a very difficult three-plus years. And I'm not even talking about money and budgets and, and all of that, just, just the growing and grappling, the needs of students and families getting ever, ever more complicated. So with that sort of as a backdrop, just putting us, ourselves on, on cue to, to be, to be more attentive to what is one of our five jobs, is to work with the superintendent, you know, in this way. So that, that being said, I do want to thank Dr. Lyons and congratulate him for, for leading this district, for, for staying with us. I know you, you proudly say you've been here 10 years, and three is our assistant superintendent, now seven or eight is the superintendent. And, and I, I love it when you say that, because there's some, there's some stability there, there's, there's confidence, there's, there's competency, there's even expectation, right? We can have that of each other. So I, I really enjoy that you speak with pride about your, about your time here. That's, that is, that is meaningful. So, so, so thank you for, for what has come, what you have done and the leadership that you've, you've provided. And also the changing times. I do, I do find, and I think the community does, finds you pretty approachable and, and pretty open to sharing of, of points of maybe disagreement, or sharing of, of points of, 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 you know, how, what we can do to best improve the work on behalf of students. And that's probably how I would summarize, if not all of my conversations with you, have been focused on, on the experience that we as a collective administration can have a useful and positive impact on, on teachers and, and staff, and how that then, you know, sort of, you know, plays itself out into impacting the lives of kids. And you have really kept us thoughtful of, you know, just about that, which is why we're here. If it weren't for that, then the rest of it is bricks and mortar, which isn't as exciting as impacting young people. So, thank you.
Pete?
And Kevin, I do see you, just Pete was first.
Yeah, I don't have my, what I wrote in front of me, but what I'll echo are some of the thoughts I had putting together my evaluation, which is, we have been very lucky to have the stability and the leadership of Dr. Lyons and his entire staff. I mean, he's the figurehead and he does all the hard work, but I mean, Kara's here, we have an entire, you know, set of curriculum leaders and other staff, administrators at all of our schools. And, you know, one of the things I had said is, most districts would, would just love to have that type of leadership that we have. And I've seen throughout the state, and this obviously isn't my bar, but I mean, throughout the state, so many districts are struggling to find a competent superintendent, and they have really just horrible working relationships between school committees and superintendents. And we've been very lucky to not have that type of working relationship and to have the strong leadership of Dr. Lyons. So just wanted to echo some of that.
Thanks, Pete. Dr. Piscadlo?
Yeah, Pete actually kind of took some of the things that I was going to say. I do, I think we're incredibly lucky with the leadership that we have, and I concur with Mr. Markham. I do appreciate too the longevity that you've, you've provided Wakefield. It amazes me every year how I think, just how complex education has become for everybody's role, you know, for, you know, teachers, administrators, staff, certainly superintendents. And it makes sense why the average tenure is so low for those that take on the role like you do, Dr. Lyons, but we are really lucky to have you and then the team that you've assembled. I had mentioned to you one-on-one, I just think things are in a really, really good place. Nothing's perfect, but man, I think the, the work that you, Christine, Ms. Morrow, everyone puts in has just been appreciated and just really, really impressive. And so I think we still have areas we can continue to grow. We always want to be growing, but I'm really appreciative of the work that you do, day in and day out, and how committed you've been to this community. So if I were one of those neighboring towns who had a student that maybe some of you might vote for to accept, I want them to come here too, because, you know, it's a great school district to be a part of, and it's because of everybody that's there. But certainly I think it starts or includes those that are leadership, and you, Dr. Lyons, are a big part of that. So thank you for being so committed to the town, and certainly the work that you do doesn't go unnoticed and is really appreciated. So it was a pleasure to fill out that evaluation and should be able to share that with you a few weeks ago when we met.
Thank you for the feedback.
So I would just say, just to go back to what Tom was saying about commenting on, on COVID and sort of its impact, I will say that, that that was not lost on me in sort of culminating in, because it really didn't come up that much, but, but we still feel the weight of it. And, and we absolutely do. And the part about community outreach and sort of being a place where people can come and ask questions, that's been the, it was the bi-weekly community calls, it's now like quarterly, but that was like something that came out from COVID that was so impactful for people in our community. And I think that's reflective. So many times I've heard sort of the superintendent discuss with people on those calls, their, their opinions might be different, but, but there was always room for like, let's discuss, let's, let's sort of meet and talk about this. And I think you have to be that way, you have to be open in communicating with people who they're sending their, their kids to us, this is their family, this isn't a job, this isn't a, this is their life. And I think every interaction that sort of Dr. Lyons has with, with people in our community is genuine in that regard. And he gives them every bit of time that, that he can to help them come to a place where I think they feel comfortable with decisions that are being made. Operationally, I see support sort of bottom up and top down in our district. Recently, we had curriculum coordinators come and talk about a science, I think it was the science curriculum, where they sort of, they were going to present, but then they pulled it back because they said that they weren't ready. And, I mean, how, how many people work in an organization where you can come, you know, a deadline when you have to present a project and you feel comfortable saying, hi, it's, it's not done, it's, I can't give you this because it's, it's not quite what you want. And to have that freedom, to have that ability to do what's right is important. So I think that, that methodology permeates throughout our district, and I think it starts sort of with the superintendent, and then, and also but comes up from the teachers as well. They wouldn't feel free to, to do that if they didn't know that they were going to have backing when they got to sort of central office. We had the NIES accreditation piece today. When I sat down with the NIES people, one thing that they commented on was this idea of whether it was like social emotional learning, or the vision of a graduate, or having like empathetic students and academic rigor, was that they heard that everywhere, whether they were in a K class, whether they were in, you know, humanities class at the high school, everywhere, talking with district leaders. It was everywhere. And they said that they don't often run into districts where that, that singular voice just rings so true across every interview that they have. And that's impactful. And again, it comes from everywhere, but if that sort of discussion, or if that, that emotion stopped anywhere along the layer, it would just kill it everywhere. So the fact that we have it everywhere is, is amazing. So I think that, I think Tom's right. I felt bad that we, that we missed a year for evaluation. Things are absolutely missed. There's some minutia in there. I think we did our best to sort of capture that, that gap, but I, I think it's reflective of sort of our, our experience and what Dr. Lyons has brought to the district. So-
Stephen, I didn't mean to be critical.
No, 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 no.
It didn't come across that way. That was not what I meant.
No, you were absolutely right.
We did a disservice to Duck, that's all.
No, you were absolutely right. And anyone reading from the outside would not see one mention of that. And so you are absolutely 100% correct. I just wanted to let you know that I felt it, sort of in the, and that was probably maybe lost in putting everything together, but I sort of felt it in people's individual evaluations, which was, which was good, inappropriate. So, okay, I think I've said too much. So thank you, Dr. Lyons, for your time.
Share one comment?
Sure.
So just, I'll just be very brief. I just want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you for the, the feedback. Thank you for the, the tough love, the tough questions, right? And so I know this is kind of, everyone's very kind, but I, I think that we have been able to be in a working group where we've been able to kind of take on some difficult things, we've been able to agree, we've been able to disagree. I also don't, I would be remiss if I didn't genuinely give credit and recognize my thought partners. Christine Fagner, who is honest to a fault and will, you know, tell, tell me like it is, like, that is crazy, there's no way we can pay for that, you are- No way, right? And Kara, they're, they're, they're my thought partners, right? And, and we were talking today, we, we met today and we were talking about how we can support leadership in teachers for the next two years, and how we can think about, do a better job thinking about succession planning, and doing a better job in creating opportunities to take advantage of teacher leaders, right? We have really some teachers that are ready to take on some leadership and, and do some things, right? I don't mean to be staring at, you know, but, so we have some talented, we're fortunate, we have really talented people that, you know, like Meg Delory said, they're, you know, not just the students are going to be the future of our district, but, you know, the teacher leaders are going to be the future leaders of the district, we hope, right? And that's what creates continuity, right? Because that's what creates continuity in relationships. And so, and I'm grateful to be a part of that. And, you know, and thank you for the feedback. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alex, you look like you were going to say something.
No, I'd like to add all the positive backing that was heard here, but I just haven't been, been this, being my first school committee meeting and not being a part of the evaluation process. I'll echo, you know, by any sentiment there that, and I just, I just back off from making any comments on the evaluation process. So I'll say good things, positive things. Doing a great job.
Thank you. So motion is to accept the superintendent evaluation as presented. It was seconded, discussion, those in favor? Okay. Dr. Piscadlo? Are you still with us?
Contemplating.
No, he's not.
No, he's not. Kevin, can you hear us?
Sorry.
We were, we were voting on the motion to accept the superintendent evaluation. Okay, great. That would have been quite a turn of events. And that is unanimous, thank you. All right, moving on. Item number 11, Subcommittee Reports. Mr. Markham, Finance and Facilities.
So we have not had a meeting since our last school committee meeting, but I will say two things. One, I would like to put one together in the next couple of weeks. One of the things that we would do, it would be certainly, you know, next week or later, probably next week hopefully, but we would have the results of a town meeting. I encourage everyone, next Monday, May 5th, 7:00 PM, Galvin Middle School, to attend town meeting, participate in their one civic duty, and certainly support the challenging and long debated and discussed school budget. But be that as it may, so the two things that we would be discussing would certainly be any results of a town meeting and what impact, if anything, from there. Hopefully, hopefully it'll be a very little conversation that need to have if all goes well at the town meeting, as we hope. So, and then we'd have a full report either on the 13th or certainly from the 27th, especially in regard to following up on some school choice conversations.
Yeah, I would just mention to folks who might be listening in the budget process that we did administration-presented budget to Town Council, to the Finance Subcommittee, or to the Finance Committee, the full committee. And they indeed took a vote, and in their committee, they voted for favorable action, so hopefully that will be reflected at town meeting, and so that is a positive in the budget process, and that will all just be on pins and needles until town meeting. And if you, and bring a friend, because town meeting's fun.
Okay, Labor and Personnel, Dr. Piscadlo?
Yes, so today during an executive session, we were able to update the committee on kind of where things stand with a number of negotiations, including Unit C, as well as some of our other unions, many of which are very close to being completed, which is some great news. We met as a subcommittee on Monday in executive session to continue to talk about negotiations and plan for our next negotiating session, which is taking place next week on the 8th, back in the Galvin School. So continued negotiations with Unit C. So looking forward to kind of the next steps and anticipate hopefully making some really good progress, so that's kind of where things stand with labor.
That's great, thank you. Student Services, I know that had been Eileen, but Melissa, do you want to give an update on our last meeting for Student Services?
Sure, we kind of wrapped up our research and work with late start times, waiting to see what negotiations with the union will bring in that next year. We talked about, one of our big goals for this year was also trying to find ways to increase visibility of CPAC and Special Education Services, and we talked about new newsletters that have been going out, and work that Rosie's been doing, trying to make sure that the website is up to date with enough information for families.
CPAC policy?
Mm-hmm, and our CPAC policy, yeah. And then we talked a little bit about lab programming and trying to find ways that as a school committee, we could support PTOs and their continued efforts to bring lab programming to elementary schools in particular.
Learning about...
Differences and disabilities.
There you go. Great, thank you. Policy and Communications, Stavis?
We have not met, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 6th, at 3:30 via Zoom. And just as kind of a recap of what we've been trying to get through, we're just trying to continue to move through the various, we call them MASC books, just the way that the various policies are aligned, so that we can finally get our district over to a more comprehensive policy site where information is much more searchable by members of the community. So we have a bunch of policies that are pretty close to coming back to the full committee, I'm hoping maybe either on the 13th meeting or the meeting after that, we'll have some that will come back, at least to go on the table.
Great, thank you. Liaison reports, if any. No, I'm not a liaison, oh, go ahead, Melissa.
So the Youth Action Council is accepting membership applications through, I believe, May 2nd, so if anyone's interested, any eighth graders, ninth through 12th graders are interested in being part of the youth council.
Is that this Friday?
Yes, it is. They're also currently finishing up their work on making a recommendation about voting age reduction for the town. That should be coming out relatively soon. Tomorrow, I believe it's tomorrow, may have been today, they worked, one of the members worked on bringing a first responders career day to the high school.
Oh, cool.
So that was very successful. And they talked about a school supply drive in conjunction with a sustainability day sponsored by Representative Garbidean.
Brilliant.
And that's, and the other update is that they believe that the youth council budget is going to be formally incorporated into the town council budget at town meeting this year.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Good work. Yeah, Kevin?
For ESC, there hasn't been a meeting since the last, the last school committee meeting. I did get an email about a group called Highland Fleets, that's basically helping communities in Massachusetts electrify school buses. So this is just an email, but I reached out to them and saying, I got the email from Jen Kelly, the WMGLD Commissioner. So basically I reached out and I said, you know, that Doug and Tim, you know, if we can set up a meeting, that we can meet and just like explore those options. And it's looking at procurement cycles, you know, things that, I don't know off the top of my head, but, so I kind of volunteered you and Tim, proactively, but I have...
Bring an extension, Kurt.
But just want to get that.
Dr. Piscadlo?
Yeah, just real briefly, was able to sit in the JLMC meeting today, and one of the things that had come up from the WEA was, was there maybe a possibility of the school committee considering crafting a cellphone use policy? First, the discussion was around like at the high school level, but then maybe is there something that the committee could craft that would be district-wide? So something to maybe consider for the next group or whoever's going to be on policy next, but I thought it was a good conversation and certainly something I think we should consider, but just something to throw out there for us to consider in the future, whether crafting such a policy might make sense.
I could swear we have two.
What kind of cellphone policy are we talking?
So this, Kevin, if I can just jump in with one piece of that? So we talked about how the Attorney General has recently come out with different models of types of policy for schools that's a little bit, you know, off and away, don't bring it at all, you know, it's just the three different models, so we talked about that guidance, and I know the Attorney General spoke to, I believe, any superintendent in the state that could make it recently about that. So that was part of the conversation too, just more in line of, it came up with interest to kind of have the high school match more closer to what Galvin is doing right now in terms of the yonder pouches and expectations around cellphone use in the building, just in terms of disruption to learning, distractions in class, that sort of thing.
So I take it the WEA was arguing for a stronger cellphone policy?
Yes, that was my...
Very much so, yeah.
Just to be clear, the awesome as a state would, you know, back that, but, you know, okay.
There's guidance, but...
York's about to down.
Okay, well, that's good insight for the, you know, however the policy subcommittee shakes out. Yeah, because I think we have a couple. For ESC, one other thing, although I am not the liaison, I will say, I think they partnered with the Wakefield Warrior Cleanup Crew, and they are doing a cleanup of, is it the, is it the Galvin? Is it, is it Galvin? Saturday, is it Greenwood?
Maybe Greenwood got Pope's phone, I could be wrong.
Okay, so they're cleaning up in the town on Saturday from, I think, 10 to noon, and they usually bring coffee, donuts, water, gloves, trash bags, so you just kind of show up, you get a t-shirt, and you can do some good, and it's beautiful out, and the weather is awesome, what a great day to sort of clean up Wakefield. Okay. Number 12, future dates and agenda items, next school committee meeting will be Tuesday, May 13th, same bad time. Any future agenda items? Yeah, any, well, future agenda items will be voting on committee positions. Pete?
I'm wondering if it would be possible to put together the same report you gave us a couple of years ago, specific to April 18th, just curious, what attendance looked like in the district across the schools, both for students and teachers on April 18th of this year?
Absolutely.
And then in terms of a date, don't put on the next meeting, because we need to work on a policy to not have meetings during school events that are in the evening? I'm joking, but I won't be at the next meeting unfortunately, so if we could push that one out a couple of meetings, that'd be helpful.
That would, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
I'll see if I can get something done for the softball league too, because, yeah, One other thing, if, we're coming up on May, would it be too soon to ask for a report on some of the internship programs?
Let me check.
Okay.
Let me check.
At least like put it on the radar, even if it's like a couple of meetings away?
We can absolutely check.
Okay. Mr. Markham?
I was just going to add to what you were saying, which is, I'd love to make sure before the kids are gone for the year, we get them back in to speak to their experiences.
Just see how it went, yeah. Mr. Markham?
I was going to ask about our Metco meeting, you know, I saw that it was canceled or postponed, and just wondering where we may be at with that?
I think that there's just, Metco Inc., I think there's just a lot going on there. Millie is kind of transitioning to another position, the CEO of Metco Inc. in Boston, and so I think that that has kind of led to a lot of things, trying to, trying to support the transition, trying to close out the year. So I just think that it was really, really difficult just to fit it all in. And so that's kind of where we're at, but I think it would be, I think we could have Glavia come back and maybe talk, and maybe have some students come back with her, and talk about their experience and kind of the program, and maybe what needs to improve and from different perspectives, right? Be nice to hear that.
Yeah, no, it's just, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to engage in that, in that particular group of Wakefield Public School families.
I think that's...
Yeah.
So maybe it becomes in the fall when, you know, when the opportunities for everyone getting organized are better. So I just wanted to ask about it and see what might be next.
I think, yeah, I think the fall would be a perfect time. I think the fall would be a perfect time.
Yeah, and definitely sort of communicate that that would be our wish, would be to sort of meet families where they are.
Right.
That'd be great. Good call. Alex, anything on the agenda? All right, maybe next time. Melissa?
Yeah, just wanted to see if we could get a follow-up too on how the ASC pre-periods are going.
Okay.
Just kind of like end of year wrap-up stuff sometime, early June.
That sounds good.
If it's been successful.
Those sound like agenda items. All right, item number 13, school committee comments. Pete?
I have a couple, just want to welcome Alex again, thank you for joining us, this is a big commitment of time, and, you know, the townspeople are very fortunate to have someone of your expertise willing to join us, and definitely appreciate it. I know usually, we also talk about MASC, so MASC is kind of the group that helps school committee members with support. They're great to, they come usually once a year when we have our little get-together as well, and they teach us about various topics. And one of the awesome things about becoming a new school committee member is they have an opportunity to, and I think we're required to do this, but they have a training you go to.
Already scheduled.
And it's awesome.
This weekend.
It is awesome, so just hearing, you know, you get to ask all these questions, you learn about all the things you aren't allowed to do, and it's really, really, no, all joking aside, it was actually a really enjoyable day of time, and I hope the experience goes well for you, but thanks again for joining us. And I just wanted to echo again what Tom said, I mean, there's no better duty to your town than spending your Cinco de Mayo, 7:00 PM at the Galvin. The Boys and Girls Club will be supplying entertainment for your children to support our budget. The school committee, the administration, Christine, Finance Committee, members of the subcommittee here of Finance, has worked very hard to put together a budget to support our staff, and really hope townspeople will come and support the budget. It's what's needed to fund all the great things that happen in Wakefield Public Schools.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay.
I will, I will close by saying, yes, go see Hades Town, I don't have a kid any yet, but I will watch every single theater production that our district puts on, because they are all fantastic. I'm going Saturday, because, you know, that's how it shakes out, and I'm sure that'll be the show. So, okay, I think we have a motion for adjournment.
Yeah, move that the school committee adjourn, it's meeting on Tuesday, April 29th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? And that is, I'm assuming unanimous, Mr. Markham is also on board with, I think he wanted to stay longer. Yeah, all right, thank you, and have a good evening. Thanks, Kevin.
Good night, everyone.